Welcome to your town meeting. The town clerk has informed me that we have met the quorum of 50 people present at the last count. I declare the 2018 special town meeting in session. To honor the work that our servicemen do for our country every day, the town meeting invocation will be read by Earl Godfrey. A Massachusetts native, born in Springfield, Earl has resided in Long Meadow for over 60 years. A former Air Force captain, pilot, and Vietnam War veteran, Mr. Godfrey retired after many decades in business, enjoying the senior center and especially the monthly Veterans Circle. Over the past 10 years, Earl has continued serving the community during many elections in various appointed capacities. Mr. Godfrey.
Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to offer the town meeting invocation for your kind consideration. We have come together in civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our Commonwealth itself. We have come together to make decisions about our community. And as we deliberate, let us advocate for our positions, but not at the expense of others. Let us remember that there is an immense gap between saying "I am right" and saying "I believe I am right." And that our neighbors with whom we disagree are good people with hopes and dreams as true and as high as ours. And let us always remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is of far greater importance than any difference we may have. Thank you.
Thank you. I now welcome Long Meadow High School student Thomas Caloris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and remain standing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember and honor all public servants who have sacrificed for our country. I welcome you to town meeting, our town's legislative body. To any first-time voters and to our visitors, a special welcome. Some general housekeeping details and announcements, rules of procedures, before we discuss the warrant article. I also recognize that there are people in line, and I will welcome them to come to the front as we are proceeding. And I value your patience in welcoming people as they come in. In the unlikely event of a fire alarm or other emergency, exits are clearly marked to my left, the front, and to the right, and the back doors there. Please use the appropriate exit based on your section of the gymnasium. Should you need a hearing assistive device, inform a teller, somebody with a lanyard on, or somebody at the clerk's desks out front, and someone will loan you one. All visitors must sit in the visitors' section, so that is this section over here to my left. If the meeting gets full and we need more space, I will ask our visitors to go to the cafeteria, and voters will use that section. Should we need to hear from any non-voters with expertise or any specialized knowledge of a project before town meeting, I will permit some non-voters to speak. Those include town employees regarding issues relevant to their departments, and the following non-voter has received permission to speak, Henry Clement. Any all-department heads, directors, superintendent of schools may speak on those matters. The back of the warrant includes a general list of rules of procedure that we will follow. The rules of procedure follow Massachusetts general law. They also follow our town charter, our bylaws, and a book called Town Meeting Time, which I have before me. In order to speak, please wait for recognition from me, the moderator, then state your name and address. All remarks are directed to the moderator. Motions to limit or extend debate require a two-thirds majority. Our town's bylaws require that if residents want to stop debate, they can only move to do so until at least five have spoken in favor and five against. The presumption is that these are speakers from the floor, not the main mover of the motion. Because we have a single issue before us on the warrant, and the issue has generated a great deal of interest, motions to call the question will not be in order until 45 minutes from the start of presentations to ensure that people have a chance to get their voices heard. There are three microphones in the center of the gymnasium, and a center for elected or appointed board members speaking on behalf of the board, or any citizens who have been granted permission prior to the meeting. Citizens wishing to speak shall line up at each microphone, and I shall alternate among each line. Whenever possible, preference shall be given to those who have not yet had a chance to speak. You'll notice that they are marked different colors: green, yellow, and red. The one marked green is for those speakers in favor of a motion. The one marked yellow is for those people with questions or those making motions. The one marked red is for those opposed to a motion. I should note that if you are at the yellow microphone and you have three, four, six questions, ask them all at once. There is no cross-examination. There's no back-and-forth between speaker. It's all your questions at once, and then I will direct the questions to the people who can best answer those questions. Comments from the center microphone are approximately two minutes. Deliberation involves sharing of accurate, relevant information, weighing of advantages and disadvantages. It ought to end when no new information is available. So I therefore ask for all speeches to be clear, brief, civil, and relevant. Should speeches wander from their point or become repetitive, I will interrupt to encourage the speaker to come to the point. The rules of procedure permit some kinds of talk and prohibit others. And, you know, we're in a gym, please do not cheer or jeer, and refrain from clapping at speaking time because it uses up some time. We all speak to the issue; we do not speculate on motivations. We avoid referencing people by name whenever possible, and we do not impugn anyone's character. Should there be a need to call a speaker to order, I will do that. You will be directed to come to order immediately. Not heeding warnings may result in that person being directed to return to their seat. Town meeting time indicates that should a participant not come to order at all, the moderator shall request the person to withdraw from the meeting and may direct a police officer to escort the person out of the building. Let's stay civil. With that, we come to Article One. I call on James Martin to make the motion. Mr. Martin, name and address, please, and make the motion.
Thank you. James Martin, 38 Oxford Road. I move in terms of the article.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. I will note that all boards and committees may make reports relevant to a town meeting motion. On zoning bylaw changes, the planning board makes a report. The planning board recommendation will be made by Don Holland. Mr. Holland, please come to the front and name and address.
Hi, I'm Don Holland, 43 Silverbridge Road, in town.
Right in the microphone, please.
Is that loud enough?
Speak, if you can.
The planning board...
Speak right into the microphone, like real close to it.
The planning board voted to endorse the citizen's petition to rezone the property on which the Brewer Young Mansion sits from residential to professional. The planning board held multiple meetings at which both proponents and opponents to the change in the rezoning spoke. We had scores of people send us emails or letters, both for and against. And then the planning board held a public hearing earlier this month, at which approximately 80 people spoke, again, either for or against. At that point, the planning board deliberated and voted, and by a three-to-one vote, the planning board voted to endorse the citizen's petition for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Now, there are two government boards that focus on historical matters in town. There's the Historic District Commission and the Historic Commission. The Historic District Commission is a regulatory body for the historic district. It approves or denies property owners' applications for certificates of appropriateness before making any alterations to property in the district that is visible from a public way. The Historic Commission is a different entity. It plans and implements programs related to historic places in Long Meadow. It is advisory. The Historic Commission wishes to offer a report. I recognize Margaret Cohn, the chair of the Historic Commission, to make a report. Name and address, please.
I am Margaret Cohn. Do you hear me?
Right in.
I am Margaret Cohn. I live at 66 Woodland Road. I am the chair of the Long Meadow Historical Commission. We are an appointed committee whose mission is to identify, preserve, and educate the town about its unique heritage. We are gathered here tonight regarding the matter of 734 Long Meadow Street, which has been purchased by the Long Meadow Historic Preservation Partners and is the subject of a proposal for a zoning change from residential to professional. The Long Meadow Historic Commission has listened to both sides, pro and con, regarding this request. We are proud that so many citizens of Long Meadow have engaged in civil discourse and debate over this proposal. The commission's unanimous opinion is that it is not inconsistent with maintaining the historical character of our town to support this request to rezone this property from residential to professional. The Long Meadow Long Range Plan was published in April 2004. On page 70, the following was included. "In those limited cases where it may no longer be economically feasible for owners to maintain their homes as single-family residences, allowing conversion of properties to office or mixed-use may be appropriate, as long as such conversions are strictly controlled." Breathe. Oh, no, that's me. Okay. The Long Meadow Preservation Partners have presented us with a reasonable plan to preserve and repurpose the Brewer Young Mansion both inside and outside. We find no nefarious plot here to furtively build a dollar store or a drive-thru hot dog stand. The stated plan appears straightforward, with as little change as possible to the exterior and the interior of the building, making the anticipated office space a very unique, exclusive setting for a high-end tenant. Parking and traffic are intended to be at minimum levels. These are the facts that informed our decision. The House has languished for years, and now it is time to take action. Do we move forward in a manner that will support preservation by limited economic development? Or do we start a precedent of glorious ruins along our beloved town green as overwhelmed homeowners abandon their money pits because we could not see our way through some creative and carefully controlled zoning adjustments? Implicit in our decision is the trust that those members of our various committees, who will be sitting here a decade or two from now, will continue to make careful decisions about how to maintain the historic character of the whole town. We need to show them that it can be done. But in the end, we remind you that Long Meadow Historic Preservation Partners already owns the property and will do with it as they see fit and proper for their purposes. We can be a part of that process, or we can stand on the curb and bewail the loss of our chance to embrace progress on our terms. The Long Meadow Historical Commission encourages the town of Long Meadow to accept the proposal for a zoning change of the property at 734 Long Meadow Street and support a thriving, professional repurpose of this beautiful mansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. Please refrain from clapping. I want to direct any voters sitting in the visitor's section to go to the voter's section. So if you have a voting card, please sit in the voter's section. Thank you very much. If we have to, we'll use that space, but right now I'd like to maintain that for visitors. And anyone coming in, there's plenty of room in the front, and, well, get cozy. I now recognize Mr. Kennedy for a motion.
I'm Steve Kennedy. I live at 11 Western Drive in Long Meadow. And I move to fix the method of voting on the pending motion to be by ballot.
Is there a second? The motion has been made and seconded. You may speak to it, Mr. Kennedy.
As you all know, you already have a voting card, which was handed to you when you came in. We anticipated that there would be a large group of people here, making it difficult for the ballot counters...
Right in the mic, please.
...for the clickers, making it difficult for those with clickers to have a very accurate count of votes, both yea and nay. By using this ballot, we will ensure that when we leave here this evening, we will know what the outcome of this vote was. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I will note that we may only start voting on this. This motion requires a simple majority. I would like for everyone to be seated before we come to a vote. So if you would like to vote on the motion to fix the method of voting by ballot, please find a seat. Would the police officers, please, go to the doors? We will be closing the doors soon. Mr. McGurk, could you turn to the police officers and direct them to shut the doors All set. Okay. Once people are seated, we will vote on the motion to fix the method of voting by ballot. So I ask those of you who are standing in the back to please come in the front. The first three rows have plenty of seats. Please come to the front of the auditorium, the gymnasium. At this point, there will be nobody let in. We need to come to a vote. The auditorium, because we have soundings in the auditorium. And just so you are aware of what we're going to be doing, we will have those people who are still standing in line go into the auditorium as an overflow. Mr. Callic, I wonder if I can press you to service? There's no pressure here.[1245.21][1245.21](laughing) Because there are still people who are coming in. There's some chairs in the front, but we're going to vote on the motion to... Mr. Callic, if you'd like to vote on this motion to fix the method of voting, we'll do that now. Would all those in favor of the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed to the motion, please raise your blue cards? Thank you. The motion passes by majority affirmative vote. We will now hear a presentation from Mr. Lamb and Mr. Orzalak. Please come to the front. State your name and address. The proponents will be granted not longer than 15 minutes for a presentation. And there's a slide advancer on there.
Chris Orzalak, 60 Eastham Lane. I have been a resident of Long Meadow for 28 years. My wife Gina and I have four children who go to Center School in Long Meadow Montessori. We love this town. I have been a resident of Long Meadow for 28 years. My wife Gina and I have four children who go to Center School in Long Meadow Montessori. We love this town and are dedicated to serving it. I have served for over five years on the Montessori Board, Gina on the soccer, basketball boards, as well as Center School Council, and together we coach over a dozen soccer, hockey, basketball, and lacrosse teams. I'm incredibly optimistic about the future of our town. One of my great joys is when I run into a friend from years past who has returned to Long Meadow to raise their family. Fortunately with our project and our community's passion for it, I've had this experience numerous times the past six months. The reason I became passionate about the Brewer Young Mansion was primarily because I was tired of it looking like an eyesore for our town. I passed the property every day to and from work, and Gina and the kids on their walk to and from Center School, so we were reminded daily of its degradation. In order to attract the necessary investment to restore and sustain the property, my view is it had to be repurposed. About three years ago, I approached Andrew as the primary abutter to seek his interest in teaming up to preserve the property, but Andrew was against rezoning it. He was strongly against it being anything but a residence, and I could tell how deeply he cared about preserving this mansion in the best way possible. I don't think I've ever met anyone more dedicated to preserving Long Meadow's history. But fast forward to July of this year, when the mansion went back on the market, I approached Andrew again, and this time because it was in even worse shape, and it was clear no residential buyers would emerge. Andrew agreed the only way to save it would be to make it self-sustaining. Sustainability has always been the key for me. I'm not looking at this project over the next 12 to 24 months. I'm looking at it over the next 50 years and how it can survive through various economic cycles. We believe our plan can do that. I'll stop now and let my partner and friend, Andrew, take you through our project.
Thank you, everybody. It's really a pleasure to be here tonight to share our passion for this Long Meadow treasure. My name is Andrew Lamb. I've lived here for 10 years. My wife and I have four kids. They go to Center School in Williams. And I'm very devoted to historical preservation. Before I became a physician, I got a degree in history. I chose to live in the historic district. I served for many years on the Historical District Commission and the Historical Commission. And while I was on those commissions, I was strongly against the Young Mansion ever being anything but a residence. I actually lived behind it, and I said, "Let's just wait as long as possible for some rich person to buy it, fix it up, and live in it, so I can have a nice neighbor and not have to live next to a parking lot." But as these last eight years have gone by, and we've all seen the mansion degrade, I finally changed my position for two reasons. Number one, I realized no one is going to buy this house to live in it because it's too big and it's too costly to restore and maintain. And second, we don't have the luxury of waiting more years for something miraculous to happen. If we're going to save it, we've got to do something now. So let me first just briefly tell you about why I think this is such an important building for our town. It was built in 1885. It had some notable Long Meadow residents, including the first owner Samuel Woolcott, who was a first church pastor, Edward Brewer, a state senator, and Mary Ida Young, the matriarch of the Young family. But just as important, I consider this the best example of colonial revival architecture in the Pioneer Valley. Fast forward to the present. The mansion was put up for sale in 2010. Its owners were foreclosed upon in 2014. That was the same year some of us remember seeing the column of the front portico spontaneously collapse, as you can see in the photograph. The residents were evicted after a lengthy court battle in 2015. Very memorable to myself and the other abutters were when the police came in with their K-9 unit to find and arrest a man who had broken in and was squatting there. In 2016, the bank was compelled to fix the portico for safety concerns. They spent $120,000 to fix four columns and a deck, which kind of gives you an idea of just how expensive it can be to properly restore historic properties. In eight years, there's been no interest from any party to purchase this as a residence. Now, the town was not sitting idly by. I was on the Historical Commission. I and other members spent years, many of our own hours personally, reaching out to historical preservation societies, nonprofit organizations, local benefactors. None of them, and this is a partial list, was able or capable of helping us rescue the mansion because the costs were just too great. Meanwhile, it was degrading. And if you've been on one of our open houses, you've seen this. I'm sorry. Wow, this is a very sensitive thing I've got here. So my partners and I concluded this last fall. No one is going to buy the mansion as a home. If we wait much longer, it will not survive. We've now been able to inspect the inside, and we know that to restore it, it's going to cost more than $2 million because the building is not modernized and the shell of it is rotting. And to save it for the next century and beyond, it has to become self-sustaining. We have evaluated all possible uses. We can tell you with certainty, many of these uses, including bed-and-breakfast, events' center condos, would never generate enough money to restore and maintain it for the long term. We're talking 50, 100 years. Our best option is professional offices. This would have the least impact on the green and be least obtrusive to abutters. Open only nine to five on the weekdays, quiet at night and weekends. It is the most restrictive zoning change possible to go for professional offices. Very different from commercial zoning. For example, if you wanted to try to make this building, a building the size of Bed and Breakfast, you would be having to change it to commercial zoning. But that opens up this location to other detrimental things in the future, like strip mall, gas station, chain store. And that's...those are things that I think we don't really want to see on our historic district. In addition, a traffic study has already been done that's been reviewed by the planning board. It showed traffic impact would be minimal. As a member of the Finance Committee, I can tell you, we've had the highest tax rate in Massachusetts for the last four years in a row. If the mansion is restored, it will generate about $50,000 in property tax. If it has lost, the empty lot will generate $3,100 only. Remember, this was actually put forth, saving the mansion in this exact manner, was put forth in 2004's Long Range Plan for our town, and that was adopted at town meeting as part of an annual report. The Historic District Commission, in addition, will forever ensure the historic exterior of this building is unchanged. And the choice of offices allows maximum preservation of the interior historic spaces, more than any other possible use, which is very important to us. This is a picture of the entry hall. Everything you see in this picture, we have the intention to save. These are just other amazing details. This building is very conducive to offices because there are central hallways with large rooms off them. You can easily imagine opening a door off the hallway and going into an office space. This is a picture of the external plan. Our goals were to leave the existing streetscape largely unchanged, hide the parking in the rear, make the property invisible to all the abutters, and save as many grand trees in the backyard as we could. It's very important to realize that all of the parking for this site will be on this site. There is no intention to use community house parking or other public parking. It's a requirement of the planning board that all of the parking be on-site. We don't get to choose how much parking there will be. This plan, which has been reviewed and recommended by the planning board, shows 27 spaces. This plan, which has been reviewed and recommended by the Planning Board, shows 27 spaces. It is possible that the Zoning Board of Appeals might ask us to raise it by nine spots to a maximum 36. If that comes to pass, there is plenty of space behind the building itself, as you can see, for those additional nine spots. Boy. This just is a color scheme... schematic showing how existing and added landscaping would obscure the view of the property and parking from all abutters and from the street. The curved entryway limits the line of sight into the parking area. There is an opaque hedge in front of the mansion, as you can see in the bottom photograph, which basically obscures the entire property, and you can see the parking is not visible. There... in the upper right, there's a picture of a bunch of... a wall of 20-foot-tall arbor vide, which would go around the perimeter of the property so that abutters like myself do not view it. So to sum up, who supports this and why? I think it's very notable that myself and the other abutters strongly support this plan. Both houses on either side of the mansion have already publicly expressed their support to the Planning Board. You've already heard that the Historical Commission unanimously endorses this, and the Planning Board recommends it. And many of us, I believe, care very deeply about saving this property. I just want to close... wow... by answering a few frequently asked questions. Number one, why can't we wait longer for a residential buyer? We have waited eight years. There has been no residential buyers. When we bid for the property, there was one other bidder. We knew that other bidder wanted to rezone it for commercial use. We heard that from the real estate agent, and the individual also contacted us. And just in case this comes up, there was no bidding war, okay? There was no multiple bidder situation with the price going up and up and people going back and forth. We strongly felt that our vision for the long-term sustainability of this property was the best, and we... to increase the chance of getting it, we bid over the asking price. We did not know what the other party would bid. When you consider the possibility of a residential buyer, you need to understand, we bought it for about half a million dollars. It cost $2 million to restore it. You're looking for somebody who can spend $2.5 million on this property. We also know that the annual cost of living there, because we've talked to the prior owner, was about $100,000. Finding somebody like this is remote in the extreme. The kind of buyer who can purchase this isn't the person who's been waiting around for eight years for the rock-bottom price. And it's certainly not in Long Meadow's best interest to install someone in this building who doesn't have the means to fully restore it and maintain it. Because if that happens, then it's just going to kind of limp along in its current decrepit state, just like it has for the last 20 years. I don't think there's a white knight coming to rescue the mansion, and I don't think we can wait any longer for a miracle if we want to save it. Next question. Will this lead to other properties being rezoned? No. To suggest that rezoning the mansion and saving it tonight is going to suddenly lead to the rezoning of a lot of other homes in Long Meadow is just to ignore the uniqueness of this property and this circumstance. There is simply no other home in town like it. Its size and prominence set it apart from any other building in the historic district. And planning boards in the future and town meetings just like us in the future are going to recognize that this was a necessary action to save an irreplaceable structure on our Any property that wishes to be zoned in the future will be judged on its merits alone. And we can trust future planning boards and town meetings to do what they think is best for Long Meadow, just like we're trying to do tonight. And this is a very arduous process. And I'm not just talking about the financial investment or the navigation of, like, lots of town boards and their requirements. There's actually a personal cost to doing what we're trying to do, you know? When you do something like this, you put yourself and your family out there for people to criticize and sometimes attack and even vilify. So I don't think that the Young Mansion being saved tonight is going to lead to a whole bunch of people in town saying, "Gosh, I can make my house a business. What a great idea. Let's do what these guys have gone through to get there." I don't think that's going to happen. And there is certainly no town plan to commercialize a whole bunch of houses on Long Meadow Street. That's just not true. Is this spot zoning? No. Town council and other attorneys have already determined that this is not spot zoning, and the will of town meeting would be upheld if this article passes. Last question. Whoops. Ah, you got the punchline. What if you or a future owner tears down the mansion? I think it's important to note that if we do nothing and we fail to act, there's not going to be a mansion left to save. We've already made a public pledge. If we cannot save the mansion, we will petition the town to return it back to residential zoning, and that can be commemorated in an agreement that's binding with the Select Board. On the other hand, if we succeed in restoring it, it's extremely unlikely that any future owner would demolish it because the value of this property will then be derived primarily from the mansion itself and its unique historic and architectural qualities. No other building built in this place would ever be as valuable as the mansion itself, and it would be against the self-interest of any future owner to knock it down. And remember, let's just say a tornado came through again and knocked out the mansion completely. The Historic District Commission has designed and reviewed approval of any buildings ever built here, so you can be assured that any building here will always look historically appropriate. Thank you for listening. We strongly feel and sincerely feel that this is the best option to save this building. We feel passionately about it. I hope you'll vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. We are now going to turn... excuse me. We are now going to turn to Mr. Cropsey and Mr. Summers. Would you please approach the front? State your names and addresses, and they will together be granted no longer than 15 minutes.
Good evening.
Names and address.
My name is Henry Cropsey, and I live with my wife Melinda at 862 Long Meadow Street. Joining me this evening is Tim Summers, who lives with his wife Noel at 679 Long Meadow Street. I'm pleased so many residents have taken the time to come out tonight. While some of us here may have differing opinions, we are all at least united by the fact that we care deeply enough about this town and about Long Meadow to come out tonight. Our group has much in common with the investors. Both of us have watched as a young home has fallen into disrepair. We agree it is a beautiful historic home. We too want to save the mansion, as the investors' signs implore, but we differ on the solution. The Young Home is in a residential zone, and we prefer a residential solution. The Young Home is in a... we look to preserve the character of Long Meadow, and we are strongly opposed to commercial expansion on Long Meadow Street.
A yes vote does not save the mansion, as the signs around town suggest. This was made clear at the Planning Board at last week's public hearing. Planning Board members repeatedly reminded citizens that a zone changes applies to the land. It does not protect the building. The town is on record saying a yes vote does not save the mansion. And now the investors have offered a remarkable pledge. At last week's planning hearing, the investors pledge, and I quote, "If while we own the mansion, it is ever demolished, perhaps because it becomes impossibly expensive or a natural disaster strikes, we will petition the town to return it to a residential zoning." End of quote. What is so remarkable about that pledge is that the pledge itself envisions the demolition of the home. Moreover, under questioning by the Planning Board last week, the investors' own attorney acknowledged that any such pledge is legally unenforceable. A vote... a yes vote does not save the mansion. Another point. This is a highly marketable property when priced to reflect its condition. The investors have said the house has been on the market for seven years. This is not true. In fact, the house was actually on the market for approximately half that time for between 2.1 and 1.2 million. In July of 17, when it was listed for $444,200, it sold in nine days. There were at least two bidders, and the investors bid almost $30,000 over asking price. This is a hot property when it's priced properly. There are residential solutions. First, in 2016, one of the investors... one of the current investors made a bid to the bank with a stated objective of restoring the home as a single residence. His offer is a public record and can be obtained through the town. Second, just last week, we learned that the bidder competing against the investors is a local Long Meadow resident who planned a bed and breakfast. And finally, upon speaking with this other bidder, we learned that their backup plan was to renovate the home into luxury condominiums. All of these facts show this is... that this is a highly desirable residence, and we strongly endorse all residential solutions.
This vote has much larger implications than this single property. This home is a part of a plan to commercialize Long Meadow Street through the imposition of an overlay district, one house at a time. What is this overlay district? This is the district that is referred to by other people speaking tonight by reference to the Economic Development Section of the town's 2004 Long Range Plan. This plan identifies 37 homes on Long Meadow Street, 20 of which are located on the green, which can be converted to commercial use. In this same section, it also suggests the town could sell the high school tennis courts for commercial use. We could sell the Wolf Swamp athletic fields for a business park. In order to adopt any of these suggestions, they would have to be presented and approved at a town meeting, none of which has happened. This property is the longestest house on the green and the largest on all of Long Meadow Street. It is located in the middle of a residential zone in the heart of the historic district and catty-cornered across from the busy Williams Street intersection. If this house can be rezoned for business use, then any house can be rezoned for business use. The investors state the town has no plan to implement an overlay zone. This is simply not true. Public records indicate otherwise. Please allow me to read a message from the town manager to the town council dated December 6, 2017, and I quote from Town Records. "Mike, we need to get focused on the issues relating to the Young Mansion. Specifically, we will need an opinion on whether the proposed change from residential to professional/business is a spot zone, and if an overlay district can be implemented one parcel at a time. Further to this point, on November 29, my wife Melinda had a conversation with the town manager in which he stated in reference to the investors, 'I'm friends with them, and I am the town planner, and I intend to implement the overlay district, one house at a time.'" So you can see, the vote tonight is not just a vote about a single home or a single parcel of land. Tonight, we have one vote with two agendas. We have the investors' agenda to maximize their investment by rezoning this property for professional office use, and we have the town manager's agenda to use this rezoning as the icebreaker which smashes open Long Meadow Street for commercial development from Springfield to Enfield. We are asking you to vote no and stop spot zoning one property at a time for the indiscriminate expansion of commercial businesses throughout Long Meadow. And let me comment on spot zoning for a moment. Spot zoning is illegal in Massachusetts, and we still contend this is spot zoning and that the town council's opinion to the contrary is based upon faulty assumptions. Specifically, the town council's opinion is based upon the assumption that the home can never be sold for residential purposes. As we've already discussed, once the home was priced at market value, it sold in nine days for substantially over the asking price. In addition, the town council's opinion is based upon the assumption that the rezoning is entirely consistent with the implementation of this overlay district, which has never been voted upon or adopted and therefore doesn't legally exist. Perhaps more troubling is that the town manager is not alone in endorsing a parcel-by-parcel approach to zoning. At the Planning Board meeting last Wednesday, one of the board members who voted in support of this proposal stated, and I quote, "I actually like this idea of spot zoning because I like the idea of a case-by-case." Given this rationale, any home in a commercially viable location, whether it's in Long Meadow Street, Converse Street, Williams Street, or elsewhere, could be rezoned. I point this out because the investors are saying rezoning the Young Home is a one-time event, that rezoning is complicated and difficult and will never happen again. We disagree. Precedent is important, and when precedent is coupled with a town seeking out and actively promoting commercialization, what we have is precedent on steroids. A yes vote will negatively impact all our property values. Let's be clear what's at risk. Our homes command a premium for two reasons: the schools, and this town's feel as a bucolic residential community where children ride their bikes to school and people walk the sidewalks to visit their friends. We depend upon a constant influx of new home buyers to continue to be attracted to Long Meadow in order to maintain these property values. Once you convert enough homes into businesses around the green and on Long Meadow Street, we will look and feel, just like other communities throughout New England, whose historic thoroughfares have been marred by haphazard development.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Cropsey. The fire chief has instructed me to interrupt, to instruct the people who are at the back doors to please remove themselves from the back doors. Those exits need to stay clear. There are spots up on the back bleacher here. There's a whole row that's clear. There's some spots here and spots in the front. Please move from the exit doors. Thank you. Your time is paused. You will get this time back. I apologize for the interruption, folks. Please excuse me.
Well, I'll just go back to one last sentence here before I was interrupted. "Once you convert enough homes into businesses around the green and on Long Meadow Street, we will look and feel, just like other communities throughout New England, who have allowed their historic thoroughfares to be marred by haphazard development." This whole overlay concept is based on the misguided belief that this will raise significant additional tax revenues. This belief is wrong for two reasons. First, our tax rate for commercial and residential properties is the same. Secondly, this reasoning fails to take into consideration that by rezoning one house commercial, you simultaneously reduce the property values of all the surrounding homes.
A yes vote is a windfall for all the investors, but at the expense of every property owner in town. A final issue of particular concern to town residents is parking. The number of onsite parking spaces for the proposed development will ultimately be dictated by who the tenants are. Suffice to say, a minimum of 36 and a maximum of up to 80 parking spaces may be required. All of this is important because the... and the investors' initial design provides only for 26 onsite parking spaces, 10 short of the minimum, and perhaps as many as 54 short of the maximum. They have repeated stated... they have repeatedly stated at public meetings that they intend to make up the shortfall by applying to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a 25% reduction in the number of onsite spaces required. A little background. When the investors purchased the property, it was a 1.8-acre parcel. Just one month ago, on December 21, they sold 8/10 of an acre to the investor who happens to live right behind the property with a shared driveway in order to further shield him from his own development.
Please refrain from speculating on motives. Thank you.
8/10 of an acre is more than sufficient to accommodate enough parking for even the most intensive of uses in the professional office space. So why should we give up the town's parking spaces, a very limited resource, for the convenience of a private investor? Vote no to allow our community house to continue to operate without inconveniencing parents picking up schoolchildren, residents signing up for LPRD programs, attending classes, workshops, and events, or simply enjoying a walk around the green. In closing, we've been told a lot of things. We've been told that the Planning Board has thoroughly reviewed the plans for traffic, parking, and public safety. But that is not correct. A site and design review plan has neither been submitted nor approved by the Planning Board. So we do not know what the investors' actual plans look like. At the moderators' forum, the investors... which was the other night, the investors were unable to even state the number of offices which would be made available at the property. We were told Dr. Brooks would be leasing 2/3 of the building. Now we know he will not, leaving the investors with no tenants at this point. We were told that there was no other viable bidder, and we have since learned that there was. We were told the bidder's plan was horrible and would generate more traffic and parking problems than the investors' proposal. Now we find out that the other bidder wanted to establish a bed and breakfast, or in the alternative, renovate the home for residential condominiums. Lower-impact solutions. We told there was no chance this property continued as a residence, and now we find out that one of the investors in 2016... one of the investors who just presented, made an offer to purchase the home and restore it to a single-family residence. We have been told not to worry about public safety, but anyone familiar with Williams Street Route 5 intersection, which of course is near two schools, a church, and a community center, knows that this will only exacerbate safety issues at an already treacherous location. center, knows that this will only exacerbate safety issues at an already treacherous location, the scene of many accidents, including at least one fatally. Many of us are being asked to give the investor what amounts to a blank check in order that they might maximize profits at 734 Long Meadow Street, while asking the citizens of Long Meadow to shoulder all the risks, the risks that we've outlined tonight. This is a bad deal for the town. This body assembled here tonight represents the current town leadership, members of a long line of leaders dating back one hundred and forty years to those with the foresight to create what we now have: a living museum. Let us join that long line of leaders in preserving this jewel for the generations that follow. Let's not fall into the trap of resorting to what history will record as a botched, quick fix to a temporary challenge. Few will remember what is said here tonight, but the decision that we make will have long-reaching impact on the generations that follow. We are concerned citizens raising a red flag. We ask you that you please join us in voting no. There are other options: lower-impact options, residential options. Thank you.
Thank you. We shall now, please refrain from clapping, we shall now open the floor for discussion. I will alternate recognizing people from the yellow mic first, then we shall go to the green mic. Yellow, green, yellow, red, and we'll alternate one to the other. So no one at the yellow, recognize the person at the green microphone first. State your name and address, please.
Good evening. Steven Weiss, 18, Pioneer Drive.
Speak right into the microphone, real close.
My name is Steven Weiss, 18, Pioneer Drive, Long Meadow. I've been a member of the Historical Commission for almost a decade. I am also chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I'm deeply committed to the history and the heritage of our town. Over the last several years, the fate of the Young Mansion has dominated our discussions at the Historical Commission. As Andrew mentioned, he was then on the commission, that's when I got to know him. And frankly, he was the most energized in exploring all the alternatives, because he was the one most adamantly opposed to any alternative use of the mansion. We watched it deteriorate, we watched it go through the limbo of foreclosure and eviction proceedings, we explored every possible rescue option, none of which looked possible. Almost every foreseeable outcome led to the continued decline and the eventual demolition of the property. That is why this past fall, the Historical Commission endorsed this preliminary plan. I would like to address a couple of the rumors and accusations about the proposed change. First, that we don't know what the final plans, parking, zoning, parking, and signage and the like will be like. This vote is only about a zone change. If the change is approved, the owners will then be preparing a detailed plan for site review by the planning board, and any exterior changes have to be approved by the Historic District Commission. People have suggested that it could be used for a bed and breakfast, leaving aside whether that's economically feasible. I think that would require a zoning change to commercial, which, and again, that goes with the property, which has more potential for adverse change than this change to professional use. And while all of us love living in Long Meadow, I think it's fair to say this is not a tourist destination. There's been some suggestion that the, or innuendo that the owners are planning on gutting the property and selling off the artifacts. Frankly, if they wanted to do so, they wouldn't need a zone change to do that. They could be doing that right now without asking anybody's permission. Instead of doing that, they've been holding open houses to show off the interior of the mansion and why it's worth preserving. It is important to remember, unlike, in response to a couple of the comments made tonight, that the green actually is not Sturbridge Village. It is not a museum with an endowment. It is a living community which depends on people who are committed to investing their time, their money, and their energy to preserving each property. These owners are willing to do so, they have the resources and the passion to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Can I make one more, might I make one more brief comment?
Within thirty seconds.
We will. If this zone change is approved, the only difference most of the residents of this town will notice is that for the first time in a generation, the condition of the property will be improving. I remain absolutely convinced that this proposal is the last best hope for preserving this magnificent property, and I hope that the zone change will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I now recognize somebody at the yellow microphone. And just as a general reminder, there's two minutes within reason, and come to a rolling stop, or early.
Hopefully, I'll be early. I'm Craig Carr.
Thank you.
397 Long Meadow Street. Just looking for clarification. This question is directed to...
Right in the microphone.
This question is directed to Don Holland, I think the chair of the planning board. I'm extremely concerned about the parking and the accompanying lighting that will be created, and I've heard that the planning board has done a lot of research, and I've also heard that that is not true. Could you please speak to, has there been a traffic study, has there been a parking study?
Are those all your questions that you have?
Yes.
All right. I recognize Mr. Holland, you come to this microphone here.
Those items that you've raised would be the subject of a site and design review by the planning board. Site and design review only occurs once an application is filed, and that application has not been filed yet. There are many hoops that have to be jumped through before the planning board would vote to endorse a site and design review. Think of what happened with the CVS, with the CVS Shopping Center, where, the mall, where they've voted to rezone. Well, after that, the planning board had a site and design review application before it, where we talked about traffic problems, how to mitigate any traffic problems, what kind of lighting would there be, what kind of setback would there be, all sorts of questions. In the bylaws, there are five different areas that we have to look at, and one of them includes a traffic study. If the planning board believes that a traffic study is needed, the planning board will require that the Long Meadow Historic Preservation Partners pay for a traffic study that would be conducted by someone which the planning board hires, so that it would be independent. Other factors we looked at are grading the land, lighting, and more importantly, parking spaces. There have to be enough parking spaces to support the different offices that are going to be within the Brewer Young Mansion. For example, if there are going to be two offices, and one is a dentist's office, then that's going to be less people that are going to be going into that dentist's office. On the other hand, if you have, if you have doctor's offices there, we all know that there are six people in the waiting room for each doctor, and, overstating it, but you get the point, and then there's, there's going to be, for each doctor, there's a certain number of spaces, and for each assistant, you have to look into those things, too. So we haven't reviewed it yet, and it's something that we'll look at carefully when a site and design review application before us. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah. So you have not...
Thank, I'm sorry, there's no follow-ups.
At this point, oh, sorry, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. I recognize somebody at the red microphones. Please, your...
Nancy Hayes, 56, Williams Street. According to the town of Long Meadow zoning bylaws, Article 11, Section B, zoning requests for a change of status should consider the needs of the community. This is the seventh town meeting I have attended, and I have never heard any suggestion that the petitioners needed to demonstrate the need for this spot zoning change for the benefit of the community. The burden of proof for this zone change is necessary for the town belongs on the petitioners. I have never heard an argument on their behalf that this is the case. Instead, they continually speak to the necessity of this zone change for their benefit. They need to rezone this building into office space so they can make this risky purchase financially sustainable. They make the case that saving the building is somehow necessary for the residents. They have never offered evidence that adding office space is necessary for the residents. After having done some research as to the amount of available office space currently on the market in Long Meadow, it becomes evident that the petitioners cannot make this case for the necessity to rezone this property for professional use. An online search yesterday for available office space found over thirty-two thousand square feet of office space currently available. The average rental amount for these existing buildings is just over twenty dollars a square foot. Additionally, the new professional complex on DeWright Road may add twenty-seven thousand square feet of office space, all available within three miles of 734 Long Meadow Street. So do town residents need another nearly eleven thousand square feet of office space? The answer obviously is no. Where is the evidence that this new use for this property is a viable business model and will succeed in adding needed services to our town? Additionally, the bylaws state that the reuse of property be complementary to the adjacent area. It is difficult to provide evidence that an office building is complementary to a beautiful historic residential area of our town. More significantly, an office building location does not belong in the middle of our historic green.
Nancy Hayes, please come to...
I'm here tonight again to reiterate that the petitioners have never offered evidence that the town needs more office space, or that placing a new business property in the center of a residential district can meet the requirements of the bylaws that are supposed to protect our town, not just the interests of a few residents who took a risk and are now hoping that we will take the risk with them.
Thank you.
I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
I welcome the speaker at the green microphone.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Larry Starr, 81, Williamsburg Drive, and just before I start, I would like to take one moment of personal preference to suggest that we have a absolutely phenomenal moderator who has made this work, and we're not supposed to applaud, but I think she does deserve a hint of humor. I apologize. Good evening. My name is Larry Starr, and I would like to start out by making the statement that I absolutely believe that those who are opposed to the rezoning are not guilty of diabolical reasons for their opposition. I know they really believe that what they are doing is in the best interest of Long Meadow, and are generally good people who are our neighbors and friends. With that being said, I am disappointed in what I have seen in the approach that has been taken to oppose this change. When you hold a position so strongly and you feel that it's almost life or death to convince others that your position is the golden one, you will grab at any possible reason to suggest that your position is correct, no matter how trivial, far-fetched, or just plain wrong. There have been many statements made about this proposal that need to be very directly rebutted. Let's start with the biggest error of them all. If this is passed, it will set a precedent for remaining parcels on the green that would desire the same privilege. This is simply not true. I currently serve on the Town Charter Review Committee. Our town charter and the bylaws determine how we run this town. Anybody who desires to have any other property, whether on the green or anywhere else in town, redesignated with a different zoning classification, will be required to go through exactly the same difficult process that these individuals are going through, culminating in a planning board vote, and then ending right here at a town meeting where two-thirds positive vote will be required to enact that change. Nothing that has occurred before in Long Meadow with regards to zoning changes is germane to this particular request, and nothing in the future will be driven by what happens here. In this type of change, each project stands completely on its own, and it simply doesn't matter what has happened before in any other situation. Precedence simply does not have anything to do with zoning changes in the town of Long Meadow, and our charter and bylaws keep it that way. The second item that has been continually mentioned by those who oppose this project is the simple error of talking about this as a change to commercial zoning with a commercial building. That is also just not true. This is a change to a classification known as a professional zone, but since commercial sounds so much more menacing, the opposition continues to use that term when it's simply not the case. There have been innuendos made that folks who are trying to save the mansion have nefarious alternative plans to tear it down and build a professional building of some sort because that is more profitable. It has even been said that the owners stated things they never said, like that they demolished the building and used the inside contents to pay for the demolition.
That's two minutes.
From the beginning, the opponents have sought to dehumanize, disparage, and attack the proponents with little concern for truth or dignity.
Mr. Starr...
I'm finishing this paragraph, and I'll be...
Phil, I also want you to not speculate on motives or comment on the opposition. Thank you.
We have seen graphics produced to make it look like Long Meadow Street will be full of businesses, or the mansion will have a parking lot in front of it. It's all scare tactics, and it's all simply not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker at the red microphone.
Good evening. My name is Bill Tognary, 870 Long Meadow Street. I urge everyone here this evening to vote no on the warrant to zone 734 Long Meadow Street. I am against this proposal for two reasons. First, I believe that this zone change could be considered spot zoning. Spot zoning is defined as creating a zone for use just for that particular and different from the surrounding properties in the area. That sounds like spot zoning to me. Town council has rendered an opinion in which they state that the zone change would ultimately be upheld if challenged, but then they go on to say that, but, that small-area zone changes for solitary, specific parcels are more susceptible to a successful challenge. Not exactly a definitive argument on the spot zoning issue. The second reason is purely economic. We are in this room here tonight because the two previous owners made bad economic decisions. One owner could not economically sustain the property, and the bank made a horrible decision when they rejected two of the Long Meadow Preservation Partners, 2016, $300,000, all cash, no contingency offer, and in the body of their offer, they state, "Return the home to a marketable, single-family residence." We now have a set of numbers before us. Let's see if those numbers work. We know that developers have paid $426,000 for the building, and by their own estimate, it will cost $2 million to restore. But now we've got to make a couple of assumptions about their revenue stream. Let's give them 100% occupancy, and let's give them the fact that they may be able to convert 10,000 square feet of that 10,900-square-foot building into rentable space. Give them $20 a square foot, and that gives them a gross income of about $200,000. But the absolute best they can hope for in revenue is between 100 and 110,000. Amortize that over 2.5 million, that's a 22-year buyback. No prudent developer/investor would commit to professional space with that rate of return. For that reason, I urge you to vote no, Madam Moderator, because people of a certain age know you cannot pave paradise to put up a parking lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the green microphone, please.
Madam Moderator, Armin Ray, 19, Long Pella Drive. At the planning board meeting recently, there was a person who made a comment about the whole plan being a question of faith. And I think that's a great way to put it, because really, if you're looking at whether we have faith or not in our fellow Long Meadow residents to put this together, I would say undoubtedly yes. If you're looking at Andrew, and you're looking at Chris, you're looking at two people through this entire process who have remained optimistic, a smile. When you saw their presentation tonight, there was optimism there, a smile. Whoa.
Focus on the plan, please.
What?
I'm not doing that.
Okay.
But it's the universe's way to say, just focus on the plan. Thanks.
Well, I'm focusing on the two people who are being called developers in a disparaging manner, when these are our neighbors, who I trust my kids with every Sunday night to go to music school for the Springfield Youth Symphony. These are the people who coach our kids for hockey, for soccer, for baseball. These are the kids, these are the two people amongst who fight for music education in our schools, who have fought for an honors music program for our high school for strings that we don't currently have.
Please stick to the plan.
Right. The plan is, if the question is about faith, faith that these people are going to follow through in what they're doing, their actions have far outweighed any of their speeches so far, and all I can say is that they will follow through because of that faith and who they are. So I urge everybody to vote yes for today.
Thank you. At the red microphone, is there anybody at the, no, red microphone, please?
John Robbins, 1028 Long Meadow Street. There's still some confusion around the roles of the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission. The Historical Commission is an advisory body concerned with preservation. They have no regulatory authority regarding the zone change, nor do they have regulatory authority with the Historic District. They are a valuable resource, they do valuable work, but they are not directly involved in approving either the zone change or approving changes to the Young Mansion. The Historic District Commission does have regulatory authority. It protects the Historic District, which includes the green. The Historic District Commission will be responsible for approving any changes to the Young Mansion. For the most part, the Historical Commission has not received input from the many property owners who have invested in historic properties in town. We are making... We are making a decision which permanently impacts the future of the district and the town. It involves many factors, including the character of the town, its perceived beauty and attractiveness to all, including future homeowners. If you want to protect the Young Mansion, vote no to the zone change. The zone change will make the Young Mansion into an office building. You can pretend it's still a home, you can pretend it's preserved, but you haven't. You've now allowed an office building in the middle of the Historic District on the most beautiful green in all of New England, an office building, not a home. Why should you listen to me? I've lived in historic homes in Long Meadow for half my life. I've lived in two different homes in the Historic District, and I had my childhood home in town demolished by developers for a subdivision. I want to preserve the historic homes in town. I've served for seven years on the Historic District Commission, including as chair, and I'm currently a member of the Historic District Commission. I want what's best for Long Meadow, the Green, and the Historic District. The Young Mansion has been a home for 133 years. Let's keep it that way for another 133 years. Do the right thing, preserve the Young Mansion as a home. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Jerry Nollet, Moderator, 724 Frank Smith Road.
Thank you.
We are all Long Meadow friends and neighbors. Elaine and I moved in town in 1967 with my three sons. I loved Long Meadow, and it has always been a pleasure and privilege to serve. I've made many friends along the way, but God, it's always difficult choosing sides. I know Dr. Lamb and his associates. I have faith in their passion, sincerity, and in their abilities to rejuvenate this historic mansion. Some of ours are in favor of this plan, along with many residents. We are lucky to have them stand up at substantial risk to take on this project aimed at restoring the Brewer Young Mansion. They will have numerous challenges along the way. I'm also convinced that they can and will solve them while caring for their neighbors, because that is who they are. This is our best potential solution. They cannot do it alone. They need our help in approving a change in the current zone location to a professional office zone. It is in our hands to provide them that opportunity. This is the first of many steps allowing them to apply their skill sets and energy to convert the mansion to a useful purpose and a new life for many generations to enjoy the building's exceptional beauty. Fear of change is always with us, but the planning board process, and as described several times by my friend Walter Gunn, along with the historical groups, is our guarantee of a protected and positive outcome. Any potential resident would have to face the same critical, identical process and eventually come to us, right here at town meeting, for approval.
Please come to.
I'm in favor of the project and ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jeffrey Wint, and I live at 930 Long Meadow Street, and I lived for 24 years in the Historic District in a home that my wife and I purchased and gradually renovated. It wasn't a matter of investing a lot of money at once, it was a gradual process. I'm here to explain why I'm against this vote for a rezoning of this property. I don't think that this property is going to survive as a professional building. I think there are too many questions that aren't answered. People talk about parking, and one plan shows 26 spots, another plan shows 36 spots, but those are the minimal needs. Even if they get a 26-spot lot with a variance, that's 10 spots at the community center. But even if they get the 36 spots they claim they can do, that's still not enough. Most offices require about 50 to 55 spots per 10,000 square feet. This is 11,000 square feet. Where I work, I'm a physician, we have 117,000-square-foot complex, about 650, 700 spots. It's about 50 to 55 spots. On any given day, as Mr. Holland mentioned, there's a lot of people in the waiting room. If there's two or three physicians seeing someone in my 6,000-square-foot office, there is about eight or nine patients in rooms and about five or six in the waiting room. That's already 26 or 30 people. That's one office. If there's another office that's 5,000 square feet next to it, that's 50. So the plan is intangible. Once it's rezoned to professional, sure, they'll submit site and design review, but they took a piece of land from the back of the property that could have solved the parking spots. I'm not here to theorize as to why it was done, but it's not available. So you have to ask your question. If they're really trying to make this an eternally commercially viable property, why did they give eight tenths of an acre away?
Eight tenths of an acre. That's two minutes.
Can easily do 70 more spots.
Thank you.
Why did they take it away? Please vote no. Thank you.
I turn to the gentleman at the green microphone.
Yes, my name is Jim Moran, and I live at 48 Avondale Road. I've been on the Board of Directors of the Long Meadow Historical Society for a number of years, and I've spent considerable time studying the history of Long Meadow and the town green, particularly during the late 19th and early 20th centuries. My wife Judy and I research and publish a hashtag TBT, for those who don't know what that, that's a Throwback Thursday, every week in the Long Meadow News and on Facebook. I've learned an awful lot about the town of Long Meadow and the properties that are in Long Meadow. Long Meadow has a long tradition of moving entire houses and repurposing structures. There are many examples of this practice, including homes around the town green. It was after the split with East Long Meadow in 1894, July of 1894, that our town became the town that it is today. The Brewer Young Mansion was built in 1885, and it directly connects to this very important part of Long Meadow history. We cannot afford to lose this iconic structure on our town green, so I urged town members to approve the requested zoning change and allow it to be repurposed as professional office space. The zoning change will have virtually no effect on the appearance of our town green, other than the fact that the Brewer Young Mansion will look a lot better today, a lot better in the future than it does today. Thank you very much, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you. Is there someone standing at the yellow microphone? I can't quite tell if you're in luck. Excuse me, sir? Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Are you standing at the yellow microphone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, forgive me. Go ahead.
Madam Moderator, Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
I'm sorry, that's not yet in order. We have not had five and five, and we are not at the, are we, what time?
I thought it was 45 minutes.
Well, we still don't have enough time, because we have not reached the five and We have had five speakers in favor. We have had four opposed.
My apologies.
That's all right. Is there somebody who wants to ask a question? There is somebody behind you.
Kristen Carnehan, 311 Farmington Road. So I have two questions. The first question is if I ask a question, am I permitted to also make a statement behind one of the colored lines?
You, so you make all your questions here, and then you would go into the line where you would like to make a statement. If there's somebody already in that line, you would go behind them.
Okay. Thank you. So may I ask my question?
Yes, now you may ask your questions.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would also urge, I understand people want to get to the vote, but while we still have people in line, let's try to move things along. Thank you.
One of the questions that has come up, both in the remarks of the pro side as well as the remarks of the con side, is with regards to turning a pledge into a promise. And I would ask the town and its representative boards why we have not executed a historic preservation restriction on the deed, as they are available to public and private structures across the Commonwealth.
Do you have any other questions?
I would like clarification on why that has not been exercised, and if, in fact, it will be exercised or can be exercised this evening.
Now, let me first direct it to the Select Board and then the Planning Board. I don't know who might be able to provide the best answer, Mr. LaCusa or Mr. Holland? Mr. LaCusa?
I would defer to Mr. Holland.
You want to defer to Mr. Holland? Mr. Holland?
That point was raised during the public hearing by one board member of the Planning Board, and we haven't had an answer yet as to whether or not that would be possible and who would be the persons to place the historic tag. So we don't know the procedure that would be done yet. It wouldn't be done by the Planning Board.
Is there anyone on any relevant board or committee, whether it's Historic District Committee, Historic Commission, anybody on the Select Board, town manager, who could answer that?
So if I understand, the historic preservation deed restriction to codify the pledge is what you're asking about. So in terms of a codification of the pledge that was made, there are, I think, conceptually several legal options that we can pursue. The pledge was, is a relatively recent thing. I haven't really discussed it with the petitioners or their council, but we have an example of a developer's agreement is one version. We've done those with people, deed restriction. I think there's different ways to do it. So if, if it is necessary, or if they, if we follow through on it, then we would use some version of that, and then we would work with town council to figure out what the right fit is. So the answer is that it could be a historic deed restriction, it could be a developer's agreement, it could be an easement, it could be a variety of things. That, that doesn't mean we're not, that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean we would do it, it just, there are different, different ways, different instruments you can use to codify the pledge, and I don't know what we would do.
You can ask a follow, are you asking for a follow-up, Ms. Carnehan?
If I'm permitted?
Yes.
In my understanding of the opportunity for historic preservation restriction, it can be held by a nonprofit or a town and would be attached to the deed, and it is only binding, legally binding, if it is written in detail, signed by the interested and representative parties, and attached to the deed. Tonight, so how could we remedy a resolution on that question prior to a vote?
Mr. Crane?
I don't know that we could do that prior, prior to the vote.
Mr. Gunn, do you have an answer for that?
Hi, Walter Gunn, Long Meadow Planning Board. Funny you mention that. The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission actually recently just took on the task of holding these historic deeds. We had to really contemplate whether we had the resources and the staff to do this. The example was the library in the town of West Springfield. The library trustees were worried that the town voters at some point would convert that library for another use other than the library it is today and a historic structure that had just been renovated with state money. So really, the answer to your question is it's up to the applicant, the developer, to go for that motion. I don't think a town can force that on the developer, but the deeds do exist, and I do know of one example already being used here in Western Mass, and I'm sure there's several others that helps your answer.
Thank you. We now turn to the speaker at the red microphone.
I think this is timely.
Name and address, please.
My name is Fran Cress, and I live at 99 Oxford Road. And I stepped up because I was the illustrious person who used the word "faith" in a commentary I made at the Planning Board, and that use of the word has been interestingly construed. So I wanted to explain to you what I meant by faith. I have faith that the gentlemen that are attempting to restore this home and get this professional zoning intend to do that. However, they have taken no steps to guarantee that they will, in fact, save the mansion, vote yes, in any binding and enforceable way. And interestingly enough, we just heard that there is actually a way to accomplish that. So I am here to suggest that we have put the cart before the horse in having this meeting and asking for this vote at this time, since most people have been asked to have faith that they will do it. In our personal business affairs, I think we rarely have faith in anything without some sort of guarantee. So why we would, as a town, make such a significant decision without a enforceable basis to believe that what we're doing is actually going to happen makes no sense to me. And I'm going to read just a commentary that I, I made. Basically, I think the only way we can protect our interests in both the land and the home until the developers offer for our consideration both a binding agreement on their promise to restore the house and a detailed site plan that reflects all components necessary to convert the land and building to support professional use unreasonable. And therefore, I, and I hope others, will consider rational judgment and wise business decision and vote no this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. At the green microphone.
Marie Angelidis, 199 Tangawood Drive. I think that this is a good viable plan to save an architectural jewel in the heart of our town. We've watched it disintegrate, and I appreciate that residents have stepped forward and will be investing in our town. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment, please. Forgive the interruption. We have somebody who is available to answer the previous question.
Mrs. Carnehan's question.
Please. Mrs. Carnehan's question. Name and address, please.
Yep. Hi, I'm Sandy Cryin, and I live on 226 Greenacre Avenue. I'm also the Chair of the Historic District Commission, and I just wanted to clarify the, excuse me, questions about the preservation restriction on the deed. About 20 years ago or so, I was Director of the Sterehurst Museum in Holyoke, and we placed a preservation restriction on the deed at that time. That kind of restriction really relates to maintaining the property, its architectural character, you know, you're not going to put on vinyl siding and that sort of things. The clarification I want to make is that this property is already within the Historic District and is therefore already subject to those kinds of preservation restrictions. So I think that point might be moved, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir. At the yellow microphone.
Tim Casey, 741 Laurel Street. I would now like to call the question, and I do beg everyone's forgiveness for my inability to do basic addition.
All right. Is there a second? Okay. The motion has been made and seconded. We are past the 45, am I correct, we're past the 45 minutes? All right. This motion requires a two-thirds majority. If it is approved, we will come directly to a vote, and I will explain that procedure. If it fails, we shall keep talking. It's your choice. I would encourage all the people to come into the room and find a seat. There are some seats up here. Please come up the center aisle and/or move in if you're in this front area. There are some seats over there before we come to the vote. There are also some seats in the back bleacher. This is the motion to call the previous question. It requires a two-thirds majority. Would all those in favor of the motion please raise your blue cards? Thank you. Would all those opposed please raise your blue cards? The motion passes by majority. The motion passes by majority, two-thirds declaration. I'd like to take a moment to explain the voting procedures. Earlier in the evening, we voted to fix the method of voting by ballot. The total votes was 1,238 votes. There were 857 yeses, 381 noes, so the motion passes with a two-thirds majority affirmative vote.[1769.88][1769.88](APPLAUSE). I shall now accept a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. Is there a second? All in favor of dissolving the special town meeting, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, raise your cards. Motion passes. The 2018 special town meeting in January is dissolved.[1790.24][1790.24](APPLAUSE). Good job. Thank you.